Thank you for coming to the May twenty seventh council meeting, I'm showing at seven thirty two P M. This is our C C. Will you please follow the roll?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin?
Here.
Mr. Mulner?
Here.
And Ms. Tully?
Here.
I would now like to ask everyone to stand, remove your hats, as council president Rita Darrow leaves us in a slice of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, would you say the invocation?
I will. I'm gonna do some paradoxal commandments today. People are illogical, unreasonable, and self-centered. Love them anyway. If you do good, people will accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Do good anyway. If you are successful, you will win false friends and true enemies. Succeed anyway. The good you do today will be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Honesty and frankness make you vulnerable. Be honest and frank anyway. The biggest men and women and the biggest ideas can be shut down by the smallest men and women with smallest minds. Think big anyway. Thank you.
Amen.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have minutes from April twenty third and May fourteenth. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now before we go into comments from the public this evening, we have our arborists here to talk to us, or give us a little bit of a presentation about the trees in the city. Tom Rhodey has been with us for quite some time. Come on forward, Tom. Come up to the mic. He looks like an executive, doesn't he? And he's quite a very, very smart man, very, very much concerned about the trees in Macedonia. This man actually loved trees, and he hates coming down. So he's here tonight to talk about the trees that are being removed in the city. Tom, go ahead.
Well, the, we've been getting a lot of questions about why we took the trees out in Memorial Park. There was a lot of diseased trees. There was a lot of trees that had been damaged in storm, in storms and by truck track, just skidding the bark off of the trees. Two of the trees that I really didn't want to take out, I had no other choice but to take them out because we're widening the road. We're gonna make the eighty-two ten foot wider, and what that did was move our sidewalk into the root system of those trees. With us compromising that system, we needed to take them out. It was a judgment call. I did make the judgment, and I'm gonna stand by it because I don't want to see anybody get hurt. Once we create a hazard, and we know it's a hazard, it falls on us to take care of it. So I did make the decision to do that. Memorial Park will give us some time. We will make it a park that is more respectful of veterans, as it should be. It is a memorial park for them. We're gonna move another park. We're gonna have a park out here for the fire and police, and we're trying to take the steps in the right direction to make the city proud of us.
And thank you very much for all that you've been doing.
Thank you.
I, I think we're very, very fortunate in having Tom because right now, we have two men who have taken the bull by the horns in our service department, and John Notavange is here this evening. John, thank you for all you've been doing as interim, and Tom, thank you for all you've been doing to work with John to help out.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, Tom. You know, in the improvement of the parks,
Yes.
I'm wondering if we, I've seen a lot of weeds as opposed to grass in the park. Is there any thought that we could maybe improve the grass to weed ratio by?
One of the things we're gonna do, when, we still have some stuff that we have to remove out of the park.
Yeah, I know.
Then we're gonna completely regrade the park.
Okay.
So the weeds are gonna disappear. Okay, 'cause we're gonna reseed, and then we can maintain it until we actually bring the park.
Okay, yeah, it's, it'd be difficult now if you put weed and feed down, and some places you would have nothing but black footer.
Yeah, it would be counterproductive for us to do that.
Okay, I get you. Well, that sounds fine to me. That sounds like the plan.
Thank you.
Before you sit down. What is an arborist, and what did you do to become an arborist? Because not everyone may be aware of what that means.
Okay, an arborist is just a fancy name for a tree guy. That's really all that it is. I am, I am an expert in the field of trees. I know the biology of them. I know the characteristics of them. I, for the most part, can go look at your tree and tell you what it is, how big it's supposed to be. I've been an arborist for twenty years. I've never stopped schooling. I've been in school since I got out of high school, and that's been thirty years. So everything that I do is about the trees, the mechanics of the trees, and everything that goes with it, as far as the grass, any of your plant material around the trees, anything that has to do with, with trees and shrubs, any plant material, I have been to school for it. I've taken classes at Ohio State. I've taken classes with the state. I've been to numerous conferences throughout that twenty years. There is a requirement for me to keep my license. I have to have so many hours a year, or I lose it. Hardest test I've ever taken, I'm not gonna lose it.
Okay, so you need to be certified. You're not just arborist in name only, you earn.
This is international. It is worldwide. It's not the state, and it's not the country. This is international.
Thank you.
Very good. Oh, we got a question for you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Well, two things. Why were the trees taken down in summer? Were those?
On summer? Again, that was a two-year project that we started in two thousand thirteen.
Were they deceased or something?
Yes. What we did, the first step, was to take the ones that were an immediate hazard. The ones that we have taken out, after we took some of them out, I should have put those on the first list because there was some hollow trees that we were just, we was amazed at how bad they actually were. And then there was laying it toward the road, and you never want somebody to get hurt. There's a lot of traffic goes up and down that road, hurt, possibly not. You just don't want that.
What about all those dead ash trees, like throughout, were there any actuary laws?
We just finished the project up in Firestone, so we did all of our ash removals up in Firestone Bishop Long, up in that area.
How about the Crow Drive, all that area?
We're just gonna keep progressing around the city until we get along. As of right now, the ones on Crow are pretty good. I know we can have the bug. So, yeah, we're just gonna have to be systematic about it. Just go around the city and take them out as we can.
There is a lot of dead trees up Crow, yeah.
Yes.
So are those all the ash, the ones that are dead, are those ash trees?
Pretty much. I don't wanna tell you for sure, because I know we have some pear and locusts, and there's some oaks on that street also. For the most part, with that Emerald Ash Borer that came through, it devastated all of them. Yes?
I have one, I believe it's on senior property that I've been, a Davie tree that peed for me. And, 'cause I think it's, it's still salvageable. Do you, is that possible, that it's, you know, there can be an in-between period where you can't get to that bore?
For, for the residents, to do it on their own trees is one thing. For us as a city to do it, it, it's not beneficial to us. It, it's cheaper for me to actually go cut the tree down and put a new one in its place than to try to feed it, because you have to do it every year. If you're not faithful to wanting it every year, you're gonna lose the tree.
But, that's not my question. My question is to you, do you think I did a wise thing by spending the money on that tree? I love trees. So I'm not.
As a resident, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was, I don't wanna tell you.
I need that valid.
Time, time will tell, but I, yeah. If you're happy with the decision you made?
Well, they're coming in soon, so we'll take them on the local end.
Mr. Rhodey?
Okay, yes.
There, there are consecutism for Emerald Ash Borer. You know, has Davies looked at that for you?
They fed it, and they did give it some type of medication.
That's what I was asking about.
That's probably what they did.
That's good. All right, thank you. I'm sorry to bother you.
I think it's important to note too, I, when you graduated, when you got your urban forester, is that what you earned?
Yes.
I, I had the pleasure of meeting a gentleman from O D N R, and I've been working with him, learning more about trees and things like that, and I've actually spent some time with him, and he actually told me that any ash tree that the state comes in contact with, they're cutting down. Because they are a hundred percent sure that that ash borer will infect every tree, and had recommended that every tree that is that, it's the city's responsibility that we do cut it down. Because at some point, it will become infected, and it will kill the tree.
And that's why we're going around the city and taking care of the trees that you just mentioned. We, we have to take care of those. And please, we're, when we take the trees down, we're probably gonna leave stumps for a while, okay? And I know everybody hates a stump in their yard. Please give us time to, to take care of that also. The tree has to come down, that's the main part.
Are you taking the down off of private property?
No, we, we won't do private property. Yeah, we're not allowed to do that.
Okay, good job, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, the next section of our meeting is comments by the public. In order to make comments, we ask that you sign your name, and when you make your comment, please come forward to the microphone, give your name and address, and you have to sign in, of course, and we limit you to five minutes. And the first name on the list is Joan Kotta.
Mr. Mayor, we missed a minute. Can we go back to that afterwards?
Oh, we did it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Joan Kotta, eight eight five five Smoke Eyes Drive. I've been married to the mayor for fifty-two years, and I'm here to defend him. Not that he needs it, but this is my opinion. I sat here last night, listening to the investigator who had investigated Mr. Saub. But evidently, he thought it was more important to investigate other people. He went on and on about other people. I'm sorry to say that the three council people used their money foolishly, really foolishly. He had nothing to say. To him, his findings should be left up to council. Now, that's a joke, because the three people on council who hired him are gonna make the decision on what he thought was right about Mr. Saub. Where's the sense in that? You've had a mayor for eleven and a half years, who has moved this city forward, not backwards, but forward. Before he was elected, he was involved in the city. He was on different committees. He knew what was going on. When we had our last election, two women were elected, who never even saw the inside of the council chamber, and they're going to really run the city now. They've decided that everything the administration, namely the mayor, is doing is wrong. They feel we should just get rid of a lot of the people that are now working in City Hall and be replaced by people of their choice. Now, that's kind of stupid. Everything that the mayors before, my husband and including him, have been running the city wrong? Are you kidding me? This city has grown by leaps and bounds. People talk about Macedonia. They think it's a great place to live. Residents better think hard and long about what is happening, and what is happening to the city by the three council people that I'm picking on tonight, namely Mrs. Hannekin, Mrs. Darrow, and Mr. Engel. They thought it was very important to spend their money to more or less disrespect the mayor when it came down to it. The mayor has been threatened, and I'm telling you that publicly, through the mail, a letter to our home, by a supporter of Mrs. Hannekin, who has told us, if Scott is removed, our lives will be forever ruined. Now, how would you like that? Is that a threat or what? My husband does not listen to what people tell him to do, and that's why he makes enemies. He does what he believes is right for the city of Macedonia. I'm proud of him. I'm proud of everything he does. People think long and hard. When election time comes, if you want Mrs. Hannekin to run the city and to bring her so-called groupies with her, well, that's your choice. But believe me, if I have to go house to house and tell what has been going on at these council meetings, or ask people to watch the videos, it's a shame. And I thank you for your attention.
Next is Kathy Loya. Kathy?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kathy Loya. I live at nine one eight six North Bedford Road. I've been coming to the past couple council meetings, and I wanna thank you for your ear then, and I wanna thank you for your ear right now. Looking at the news footage of what's going on in Texas, the current rainfall that's going on there makes me nervous, because at any moment, you know, jet streams could change, things could shift, and all of that could be coming up here. So I really empathize with those folks down there, but, you know, a storm, maybe not of that magnitude, has and will hit again here in the city of Macedonia, and that's frankly what gets me very nervous. The past times that I've come and spoken, I've spoken about our stormwater issues, and again, I want to urge council to explore those stormwater management issues, particularly at the corner of Ledge and North Bedford. This area has been neglected for far too long, and private homeowners cannot fix the problem without public intervention. We've seen an increase in our stormwater runoff over the recent years because of impervious surface improvements done on North Freeway, South Freeway, as well as Interstate two seventy-one. And with the current expansion that's going on, I know that this was talked about at the last meeting, but any insight that the city can get from ODOT or whomever about what type of potential stormwater runoff we're going to see from these additional lanes would really be appreciated because we're gonna get it, and it's gonna come right through my backyard. Also, what kind of potential stormwater increases could we see from any updates coming with the railroad? You know, I know that they're hopefully going to be fixing that bridge, but, you know, it always makes me wonder, when stuff happens upstream of us, you know, stuff comes downhill. In addition to talking with you folks here, I am in the process of drafting a letter to our state representative as well, just to kind of let her know what's going on, and maybe any insight that she can give as ODOT is working up the street, and they're gonna be impacting us as well. So again, I wanna urge council to take a look at Ledge and North Bedford regarding our stormwater management. Public entities cannot continue to route their stormwater all the way without taking into any consideration our current problems. Again, these problems have been ignored for way too long, and we as private homeowners just cannot fix the problem. So, again, I just hope that the city and council can come to an agreement and look at this issue for us as we feel like we've been ignored for too long.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. We've been looking to have a finance meeting, and that's important because you're number one. That whole area is number one. And I think Mr. Mulner said it most eloquently last night, it's time to put our money into fixing stormwater besides our roads. We finally got the roads this year. We had the money last year, and it wasn't done. Now we have, you know, last year's plus this year. It's time to move forward. And, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel with studies, because we spent a lot of hours and a lot of weeks and a lot of months doing that already. It's time to put our money into the ground and fix it.
Exactly. Thank you.
One of the things that I did find very surprising, and discussing this with Mr. Feeney a couple weeks ago, is that, in fact, it appears that ODOT is not required to have a stormwater impact plan of any kind, if I understood what he was telling me. So that is a concern, because.
That's why I wanna contact my state rep, because if that's true, that's very scary.
It appears that they don't feel that, you know, whatever the outcome is of what they're doing is, is an important enough issue to include it. Normally, when you're doing infrastructure projects, there are all kinds of impacts that are looked at, on snail darters and everything else, but with the people, it sounds like this might be an issue. And I think that we've spent, we started to spend much more on stormwater than we have. We need to look at the priorities. There are areas along Iroquois, behind Sugar Bush, that are a disaster also, Kathy. And I know that there were a set of priorities that were put into place. We're going to have to work on all of these areas, and I hope that we've got a, a way to prioritize and fund what we need to do.
Well, like I said at the last meeting, my face will keep being here and speaking at council, just so that we're not ignored anymore. Mr. Mayor, I do wanna thank you, because I've been in communication with you since two thousand six, which was the year of our
Long time already.
lovely flooding that we had.
Right, the big flood.
So I wanna thank you for, you know, listening and hoping we can get something going here, ten years later.
Let me give you a little bit of an update, Kathy. June and July Ledge Road will be closed, and we will be resurfacing them. We are going to try and get funding to do it jointly with Northfield, because that road is a little silly, because one half fits in Northfield, one half's in Macedonia. So we're gonna work together with them. There's a good chance we'll get funding. Believe it or not, a small village has a better chance to get funding than we do. By working together, we give them extra points, and that helps us to get funding. So at that time, we will be looking for ways, you know, anything we could do. As far as the Ledge Road Bridge, that will be reinforced, but basically the same. I'm happy with that, only because I thought it was gonna collapse, and then we'd have
We all think it's gonna collapse.
just a catastrophe, we'd be gone. All right, so they're going to reinforce it, and they're going to take the stone off and put in girders and cement. Basically, it'll end up about the same width. I've asked them more than once to get their road, their bridge the hell out of our right of way, but they don't wanna do that. They say, Mayor, you need to buy the road. Been there, done there, which how they need to, once is enough. So all these things will be happening. We, we've got balls in motion, all right? Not directly addressing stormwater, but just to update you as to what's going to be happening there, and while we're at it, maybe we can get some extra funds with that funding mechanism to do something with stormwater. So we are working on that. I just got a study from a conglomeration of municipalities that have grouped together to try and brainstorm. And I'm going to be passing that out to council, because it's pretty fascinating stuff. For instance, they ask questions, and then the different cities answer how they address their stormwater problem. Maybe we'll learn something. But one figure that caught my eye was how much of your general fund is directed towards stormwater? The reply in Hudson, twenty-four percent. Wow. But Hudson was devastated several years ago. So they took the initiative to do that. Unfortunately, we don't have the real estate tax that they do, so we're a little more limited as to how much we can expend. But look at how they grabbed both of the Bull by the Horn, twenty-four percent of their general fund. Wow. So thank you for coming up again, and we'll
Yeah, thank you.
keep working on it.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, one more, one more point. I, I know I told you before the meeting, but June eleventh, we'll have legislation to, to resolve the problem. Since two thousand six, we've talked about it. Now it's time to put us to task, as council, decide whether or not we're gonna deal with it and how we're gonna fund it.
See, that could case to come. Next on the list is Rory Metzl. Rory?
I'm Rory Metzl. I live on the Smoke Eyes Drive, just down the street from the mayor. There's a lot of things that really get me upset. I don't like what's going on in this city. I don't like this, what's going on with this council. People, certain members are trying to take all the authority away from the mayor, and the mayor has to have his authority, and you have your authority. And I don't like what's going on, because they're just making a fool out of you, you know? And it really, it really gets me crazy, because I know, you know, the charter says, here's your responsibilities, and they have their responsibilities, but they keep encroaching on your, you know, your stuff, so. And then, I don't like the way they make some of these decisions that are being made, because if they don't benefit certain people on the council, then they're not getting through, because they're gonna go on first reading for twenty-seven years, you know, and whatever. So, but if it's theirs, it's like, okay, it's an emergency. Wow, let's get this thing through, first, second, third, away. I mean, you know, some of these decisions are like, I don't understand. And some of the things are just being overanalyzed to death. And if you can't make a decision and get a consensus, but, you know, they keep saying, oh, we gotta analyze this, or we gotta analyze that. You should know the facts before you come to the meeting, right? I would think, you know, I mean, it's not gonna fall out of the sky, you know, all of a sudden, bang, you know, so. And of course, you know, this is an election year, and some people are trying to make as many points as they can and diminish the authority of the mayor, because they wanna be mayor, okay? So this is what goes on. And you want, to wanna embarrass the mayor, and I think it's silly, because what's amazing to me is that anytime something comes up about the mayor or, you know, other council members, I don't understand it, but magically it appears on cleveland.com and YouTube. Where's this coming from? I got a good idea where it's coming from. You know, is it just, no, I don't, I don't see anybody here from YouTube or anything else. I mean, you know, and, and somebody's feeding all this information, and I think it's all political baloney, you know? And I, I've heard people, they wanna say the mayor should resign. Well, God bless you. Don't resign. Because, you know, if you resign, we're lost. We've had it, you know? And, and I bless you for that, because you have to stand your ground. I know it's tough, because you're getting beat on all the time. I can see it all the time. And that's not right. And I know other people are gonna come up and try to embarrass you and do all this kind of stuff. And to me, they're, I, I consider those what I call political assassins, you know? They don't really have anything, you know, really against you, but they're being guided into, you know, embarrassing you. but they're being guided into, you know, embarrassing you because, you know, someone's feeding them information over there. And I know if this keeps up, you would give up. I know this, you know, it's going to lead to destruction of Macedonia as I know it. I've been here for 35 years. I raised my family here and I love Macedonia. But I'm not going to stand for this. Because, well, when somebody comes up for election, certain people, I'm going to have bigger signs you ever saw in your life on the corner of my house and I'll go out and campaign for them. Because, you know, we got to stop this nonsense. And Mr. Deemer, I see, you know, I know you've been through a lot and there's a lot going on. You've been here many years. I've seen you here for, boy, forever, ever since I've been on the council. With Joe Maglerini, everybody, you know, you've been here.
Has it been five minutes?
Forty-five seconds.
That was rude.
I said, "Has it been five minutes?"
You were interrupted, you can continue.
Joe, um...
He's saying nice things.
It's like... Well, no, the mayor does. I didn't make that rule, Monarch made that rule.
I didn't have to say a word.
I, I really don't care if people talk for a long time. No, I did not. Look at my vote, I voted no.
Keeps the time. Whatever.
Well, I don't think he is.
Let's just finish this.
You're the wrath of the, you know, politics also, you know, what's going on. And this, and this thing about Scott just going on, it's costing us thousands and thousands of dollars and whatever's going on here. And I heard about that other report that you had. And it's still, it was very vague and I'm not convinced that it's enough to override the mayor's decision on that. That's his job and, you know, I'm not saying he did anything criminal. But if he doesn't get along with the other people, you're justified to do your job. And that's what I'm saying. Okay, now, I'm downstairs in the Future Growth Committee.
That's time, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to return to my committee meeting. And I hope we are planning downstairs for a bright future and not a funeral. Thank you.
Alright, that concludes our comments for this evening. So, we're going to move right into pending and/or new legislation, starting with Resolution 36-2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 36-2015 for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
I said seconds, Josephine.
I, I heard what you said. Ms. Darrow?
You have to read it first, don't you?
Sure.
Well, is this a suspension of the rules or...
Right.
She, I just said second, I haven't had a vote called even read it.
So, you have to suspend the rules first, then you read.
Ms. Anakin offered it, Ms. Darrow.
Second.
Second, it's for the second and third reading. And I was going to do the roll call for, are we ready?
Yeah.
We're ready for you to read this question.
A resolution approving the mayor's removal of Scott Schwab as Director of Finance. Ms. Darrow?
We're, we're voting...
What's your pleasure?
To suspend the rules. Yes, you have to vote to suspend the rules because it's the second and third reading.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye. What he's got to do.
Alright, what's your pleasure?
No, Josephine, you have to do, ask everybody.
Everybody was yes on the suspension.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm lost.
What's your pleasure?
Okay, well, looking at this, alright.
She has to read it.
I did read it.
Okay, I move, we passed and opposed Resolution Number 36-2015 according to law.
Does somebody second, I, somebody has a second?
I need a second.
Second.
Local.
Ms. Darrow?
I want to thank everybody for their comments. And whenever I vote sometimes, well, at least one time, a lot of people don't know, but, you know, I've been intimidated for three years now. And I have received hate mail, I've received good mail, I've received several different kinds of mail. And I took an oath. And I live by the charter. And I respect the charter that the people have in place in the city of Macedonia. And this is very important to me. From the very first investigation that was ever put in front of us, this council worked so great together. We were put in a room for about five or six hours. And I'll tell you what, I came out of there and I've never been so happy in my whole entire life that this council worked so good together as a council and also with the mayor. And I really, we really dug into this, this report, the original report that was put before us. And at the beginning of this, and I'm going to say it because it's important to me, Mr. Engel started that meeting, he was the president of council and he started that meeting and said, "We're going to treat this like we're the jury." And let me tell you what we did. And I'm here to, up here to tell you tonight that I really took everything that that report said and we picked it apart as a council and the mayor. We really looked at everything and we all kind of came to the same decision, but, you know, that's besides the point. When I was 12 years old, my brother was killed, okay? My brother's life was taken. As a family and as a little girl, I'm this baby of seven kids. When that jury came back and said not guilty, my family accepted that my brother's life was taken and that guy was off, got off, okay? I'm voting no. And nobody better take away my vote tonight because I can tell you as a council member, and I've never said anything, it's sometimes when I do comment and say why I'm voting the way I do, I've had my vote removed from the Law Department, just so you know. You elected me to vote on legislation. And I don't think that's right, that I, my votes are taken away from my opinion. I've sat up here for two years and a half with Mr. Martin saying everything and anything and his votes were never taken away. And my vote is no.
Mr. Engel?
Before I vote on this motion, I need to make a short statement. I, I hope you will indulge me. These are my recollections of the events in the past eight, 10 months. This began last fall when the mayor presented the council an investigation of the finance directors conducted by Mr. Deemer. The mayor told us that the investigation was undertaken by Mr. Deemer without his direction. And based on the investigation that Mr. Deemer had started, he was seeking the support to terminate the finance director. He said that he'd only terminate the finance director if a majority of council would support the termination. We obviously had a long meeting. The information caught me totally blind because as president of the council, the mayor had never discussed this with me at all. It wasn't his requirement, but it, it caused me to pause. That I'd sat through many council meetings hearing the praises of Mr. Schwab. In fact, it reached a point of ad nauseam with me. I felt, okay, the guy's doing a good job. Let's get on with the meeting and get home to our family. I don't need to hear that he's doing a good job. You heard last night that Mr. Schwab had received merit raises in all the years that he'd been here and it was my understanding that they were the maximum. That's only my understanding. I'm sure if that's wrong, it will be corrected. At that meeting which Ms. Darrow referred to, the consensus was that council, while concerned, felt that additional documentation needed to be presented and asked the mayor to present additional documentation. And that was my understanding, that would be done. And shortly thereafter, within a day or two, Mr. Schwab was terminated. At the time of the termination, there was no further direction as our comment from the Law Department. And I'm not criticizing the Law Department for that position. But I was president of the council and I knew that the charter required that a majority of council support such a termination. The last speaker mentioned that council was treading on the mayor's authority too often, but yet the charter does require that a majority of council support any termination. So, I made a motion because nobody was doing anything about it. And that motion was rejected. Mr. Schwab was brought back and then almost immediately terminated again. I was also the one who made the original motion to have an investigation. And I, as part of that motion, I asked members of council that they should submit recommendations of who they wanted to conduct that investigation. And the vision that I had was that we would sit down and have a meeting, interview people and make a decision. Later on, council did in fact vote to allocate funds for such an investigation, but then the administration would not issue a P, POD in order to pay for that. And so, councils, majority of council members, including myself, did in fact invest our money to make a investigation that I felt was necessary, that I felt a majority of council had passed and that the mayor refused to have a key purchase order prepared. I don't spend my money cheaply or quickly. It was a big decision, I felt it was necessary, and that's what I did. Back to the interview process. Almost immediately, council members, and I'm not criticizing anyone, I'm criticizing anyone. I'm telling you, I've made mistakes. I've never said I was perfect. But first of all, there were members of council who all had concerns that I think that somebody was going to try to rig the deal. So, first, people from Cuyahoga County were not acceptable. Then people from Summit County were not acceptable. People from Medina were not acceptable. People from Portage County were not acceptable. And finally, I was told people from Stark County were unacceptable. But you, go find somebody. Well, as many of you know, I'm an attorney. My practice in all of northeastern Ohio, but the majority of my work are in those counties. I graduated from the lost Akron Law School. Most of my contacts for the last, golly, I can't believe it, 30-plus years I've been a lawyer, started with the Akron Law School. Most of those graduates from the Akron Law School practice in counties of Cuyahoga, Summit, Medina, Portage, Stark, geez. None of those are acceptable to anybody. My frustration grew and grew and grew and I did what a lot of people who are frustrated did. And I was wrong probably. I didn't take any action because I knew it was a mission of failure. And I should have done more. I should have figured it out, but I didn't and I couldn't. And I apologize to the citizens of this city that I didn't or wasn't able to find a solution to that problem. I, in many years I've been on council, I have always prided myself that I can solve the solution, at least most times. Now, we've had, we are now here to vote on whether or not to support the termination of Mr. Schwab yet for a second time. We've had numerous investigations, reports of investigators, none of which have completely answered all of my questions. And that's probably my fault too. Because I don't believe as a council member, I have a right to direct an investigation. The investigator knows what the issue is. I'm not going to tell him to go to A to point B to point C. I'm going to say, "This is the problem, go bring it to me." And I step out of it. People aren't happy with the way the investigations were handled, but they were not directed or steered by David Engel in any way. I've lost a lot of friends over the years as a council member by voting my, my consciousness. And it begins to wear on me and it's probably reached the point where it's getting a little raw. I suppose I lost votes when I voted not to terminate Mr. Schwab the first time. And I know that in a few more minutes, I will lose more friends. I'm getting used to losing friends whenever there is a treated, a heated issue. I was elected because I promised I'd vote my conscience. I still vote my conscience. And I'll continue to vote my conscience until the end of my term or if I run for reelection, I'm not reelected. That's for, something for another day. I don't understand why people in Macedonia, members of council, members of the administration can never accept that one is merely voting for what they believe is right. But rather they attribute some, you know, exterior motive, some sinister plot, some deception. This morning, I received an email from a concerned member of the administration. He asked that that be kept confidential and I will. But it's reached a new low. He accused me of being a group of, a group to finance the higher character assassination. He said that Homeland Security looks at financiers of terrorism. I'm a terrorist now because I vote my conscience as being more guilty than suicide bombers themselves. The implication is that Homeland Security should investigate me for terrorism. That really upsets me. He said that if Mr. Schwab was not removed, the city would begin criminal charges against him. Certainly, I hope, I know, John Golden, the police chief, I respect and I have known him for years and I met him first as a, when I was the magistrate, isn't part of that plan. But that's what's being said. And I know that Myra Severn, the prosecutor I've worked with for years, that starting as a, when I was a magistrate, isn't part of that plan. But they need to know that these things are being said. The thing continued attacking my judicial demeanor and seeming to suggest that if I didn't support the termination of Mr. Schwab, I was not fit to be an attorney. That really upsets me. I am the first generation of my family to go to college. I worked hard to go to law school. I am extremely mindful of the sacrifice my parents made. I apologize for my emotions. But to attack my ability as an attorney to persuade me to make a particular vote is reprehensible to me. I can only vote my conscience and I will continue to do them. The email was sent to me on a private email and it was sent to me on my private email. I know under city policy, and I normally, when I receive private emails, merely copy that to Josephine only so that it's on the server since it is a public record. I'm not sure if I should do that or not. Mr. Deemer, if you would direct me on how I should handle that, I would appreciate your input.
I'd be happy looking.
Do it.
I'm not going to do it for vengeance. I'm only going to follow the law department. Mr. Deemer?
Then I think you should use your, your captions. You should do what you think is right.
But you're the law director.
I, I don't make a decision on what you determine to be a public record. That's, that's up to you.
I'm asking you to. The reason we are here today is not because council has refused to follow the charter. The reason we are here today is because the mayor refuses to follow the charter. The charter requires a majority of council, but yet the mayor refuses to bring Mr. Schwab back. I think I've said enough. I have to vote no. I'm not happy, as I said before, with any, all of, with any of the investigations, but I'm satisfied that my vote is my conscience and my vote is proper. I vote no. Thank you.
Let me just say this. Been on council...
It was, Ms. Anakin?
Yes. I've been on council for the last year and a half. I have attended many meetings since 2009, almost every meeting of the council and all kinds of meetings of various boards. There's always controversy about any kind of reasonable decisions. There are, and this is a very emotional issue for a lot of people. I, I do not approach any of this lightly. I didn't in the original, and I certainly don't do that now. I know what has been uncovered, and I know what's been basically refuted, and I do not believe that I, that there's any other conclusion then. I'm going to vote no, and I believe that the next step should be the return to duty of Mr. Schwab as soon as possible, and the failure to do so is a violation of the charter. Thank you.
And in your vote?
She said no.
I said no.
Sorry, I was just remembering this. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mulner?
There's been a lot of talk this evening about attacks, and attacks on character and things of that nature. I, I know I'm the youngest person up here, I know when I started, I was in my twenties, and I, I learned a lot quickly. I learned that Macedonia is a nasty, nasty place to be involved in politics, no matter which side of the fence you're on, and you guys can agree to that.
Understatement of the year.
You know, I've been attacked for my job, my intelligence, my integrity, and, and one that really hurt me was my religion. You know, my, my personal beliefs of, of what I think is right for my family, and what I do for my family, it's, it's completely unjust. It bothers me, it has bothered me since it occurred, but I leave that to the wayside. A lot of things had gone on with Mr. Schwab. He, after was let go, the day after, had begun an attack on me. And that attack, I have not alluded to, I haven't talked about it, because I don't want it to cloud what I'm gonna say. It bothers me, I think it's inappropriate, I think what he did was reprehensible, and it, it speaks to some of the things that have occurred here. It had an impact on my, on my job. The thing that feeds my, my one-year-old son and my, my eight-year-old daughter. You know, we wanna get emotional and talk about family, and, and that's what's most important to me in my life, and a $5,000 a year council job, I've got a guy attacking me trying to take away my career. He found nothing. I was accused of being a part of anything you can think of, there's nothing there. I would not put my family at risk for this job. I sleep very well at night, there's no, there's no stress in my sleep. What I say is what I mean, my conscience is very, very clear when I go to bed each night. I wanna talk about last night's meeting. We talked about being subjective and what's correct for the city. Mr. Dimoff presented a lot of different things. I feel that the things that he had presented were somewhat angled towards an outcome. The way that he presented it was angled toward an outcome. He spoke a lot about red flags. The red flags that had popped up with me, our legal department had gone back and proven him wrong on almost every fact. The biggest one was anytime that there was a fact that he presented, he had nothing to back it up. A great example was he alluded to a court case in Medina. Any attorney would tell you that case law is, is everything. What happens in the past will proceed in the future, and that will dictate what the outcome will be. He didn't even know what he was speaking about, he had no clue. The very thing that Mr. Schwab was accused of is what the man went to jail for. That's a little bit bothering to me. I mean, I'm, I'm really kind of trying to figure out what thought process someone would go through to think that that's okay, and some of the things that he did, which were proven that he did wrong, are okay, to restore him to duty. I offered alternatives with Mr. Schwab. I feel that if you put the man back in place, and I said it last night, and I'll say it again, it's not gonna be conducive to what's best for this community or our residents. You've got a man who, you know, there's twenty different people pointing down on him saying he did wrong, and at no point did he ever take responsibility for anything, nothing. At no point did he say, you know what, on that one, I did wrong. I think I would've felt a lot differently about the entire situation if maybe on one fact, he would've said, you know what, I did wrong. A polygraph test to me means nothing. People can beat polygraph tests. The questions that were on the polygraph test were wildly inappropriate. They weren't even, they didn't even allude to what I felt was serious and what was to be asked. The, the, the most important thing I wanna talk about is, and I said it last night, and I will say it again, it's raining outside again. We've gone on from this since, I don't know, September? Talking about a man who, who did wrong, the administration felt, you know, did not need to be employed here anymore. We could've done a lot of different things to, you know, let that go and move on, but instead, over $100,000 has been spent. When we could put that money towards a stormwater issue or a road being paved, when's the last time we talked about paving a road up here, guys? That's bothering me.
Last council meeting, when we voted?
That we put money towards it. We put money towards saving a man's job who, in my mind, is guilty of the things he's accused of. So the $100,000, over $100,000, could've paved the road. But instead, we're gonna just defend the man, and we're gonna continue this fight when really, we should just move on, find an alternative to, to part ways a, and be done with it. But instead, we spent over $100,000. There's always a last word that goes on up here. It happened last night, and I'm sure it'll happen again, because I'm making this statement again, but that $100,000 is not being spent by the administration, it's as a result of this council's votes. By doing what they're doing, we're essentially just taking the money and we're, we're just spending it to nothing. What's important? Saving Mr. Schwab's job, or dealing with the problems of this community? Ask yourself that. I mean, really dig deep and watch the meeting last night, and dig deep and ask yourself that question. If you're a rational person, I think I know what your answer will be. My vote is absolutely to let him go. 100%.
Mr. Teller?
Gosh, sometimes it's good to be last, sometimes it's not. I'm not gonna go on and on as, as previous council members did. I said one statement last night, now I will support it again tonight, that, and I've said it to Mr. Schwab now twice to his face, just once could you admit, just once could you say, maybe I did? There were three, four investigations done. Let me clarify one point that was brought up by Mr. Engel. Ms. Hanekin is the one who said, we will not use Summit County or Cuyahoga County. I added Stark. Why? Because he's a council member in Canal Fulton, which isn't Stark. So if you're trying to find someone who is no relation to anyone and no working with anyone, take out that county. I'm the only one who brought four different investigator names to the table. Not a one was interviewed by this council, not a one was considered. They were from Jogga County. I got 'em from the Jogga County prosecutor. I don't know anybody. The other ones, I got from the Employee Resource Council, who deal in nothing but resource information, how we do HR. I find it interesting, last night, probably the thing that sticks out the most to me is, I took this as like, last night was the trial, where we got to hear each side of the trial. And there was a lot of hearsay on the one side, because if they asked for a name, couldn't tell you. If they asked if he'd looked at this fact, couldn't tell you. There were actual conversations of an ordinance, it was okay if we didn't follow that ordinance. You as a resident should demand that every employee, including council who is an elected official, and every administration department head, follows the letter of the law that's adopted in any councilmatic action. That's breaking the law. And when it said you will get three bids, it didn't say eh, if you feel like it, and it didn't say if it's this amendment, eh, and oh, it's a trial, the letter of the law. And that, that was adopted before I was on council. It would be inconceivable that we pass these laws, and department heads can decide they will do whatever they want. What I find interesting is there are all these investigations. Ms. Darrow said prior to us even having last night that she knew she was gonna vote yes to bring him back. We didn't even hear both sides, we had decisions made. Last night was the changing point for me. I'd like to believe people are innocent, so last night I treated it as a trial. And I heard the defense, and I heard the prosecution, and the prosecution really had a slam dunk by letter of the law, auditor's law, council law, council charter, violation after violation after violation. Interviews were not conducted in the subsequent that was produced last night. Interviews of people that had sworn statements of what had happened. Sworn statements. That means, under law, I am saying I'm not lying. But they were called liars last night, every one of them. Would I get out of this? It was a before and after, it's a, the mayor has the authority by charter to fire employees. The employee has allowed by charter to come forth and plead their case. They did. To me, the evidence is overwhelmingly, this person is not here for the right reason. They broke the law. Now, there's not criminal in there, but they broke our charter, and they broke our ordinances. This person, in my mind, I vote absolutely yes to uphold his firing.
Moving on, ordinance number 38, 2015.
Yes, uh, okay, I, yes, right. The ordinance number 38, 2015. I move that we hold this at second reading.
Second.
Mr. Deemer, I already told me I don't have to roll call on this. No, I'm civilized. Sylvia, we're gonna have a meeting on the ninth.
Yeah, we're going to have a meeting on the ninth, we're having a work session, and the law department will be in attendance on two separate issues, and this is one of them.
Right, it's gonna start at 6:30, and I confirm with Mr. Deemer that the law department will be available for both the public records legislation and the legislative's been dealing with snowbills and off, snowmobiles and off-highway motorcycles. During the council meeting, we also ask that the police department be available particularly for the discussion on off-highway motorcycles, snowmobiles. Mr. Golden, I know you're doing something important, but you weren't looking at me, and I don't blame you. Can you be available?
Absolutely.
If not, please send me. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, we're in ordinance number 51.
Moving on to ordinance number 51, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 51, 2015, for its second reading, by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter 1327 of the codified ordinances by repealing requiring rental property exterior inspections and fees.
Moving on, ordinance number 52, 2015.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 52, 2015, for its second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending section 37503 of the codified ordinances relating to snowmobiles, off-way motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles.
There is a public hearing regarding this ordinance on June 11th, Thursday at 7:00 PM. You know, there's a lot of specifications within this ordinance, so if you believe that you're gonna be impacted, or maybe not impacted, but have an interest, you know, we can make sure that you have copy of the ordinance, because there's a lot of measurements of where you can and where you cannot within your property. And it would be who, we'd like any comments from people who maybe have these vehicles or don't have those vehicles. We consider this a work in progress, if it's not adopted, we want your, and value your input, so we make sure we create a law that is, what am I gonna say, Chief? Fair, equitable, and enforceable. Thank you.
Moving on, ordinance number 54, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 54, 2015, for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
An ordinance appropriating money for finance computer maintenance fund.
Moving on to?
No, we, we seconded, yeah.
I'm supposed to vote? I just was waiting for you to say, what's your pleasure?
What's your pleasure?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 54, 2015, to be passed and posted according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Now, moving on to ordinance number 55, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 55, 2015, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
An ordinance appropriating funds for the semi-annual payment to Cruz and Associates for the North Freeway Drive Improvement Bond, which is due June 1, 2015.
And what's your pleasure?
Before I, I move on, we're appropriating an additional $653, I believe, I don't have my iPad open to?
626.
626, close enough. To, to make the annual payment on the bond, the bond project. So with that, I would move that we pass and post ordinance 55, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Moving on, ordinance number 56, 2015.
Mayor, I'd offer ordinance 56, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Michelle Alice to the position of full-time dispatcher.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance 56, 2015.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Janet, if you would please tell us about Michelle.
She's, uh, she's a resident, does a nice job, we got her locked away on midnights, so if you call up after hours, you'll get ahold of Michelle. So she does a real nice job for us.
And she's been with us a year?
This is her year anniversary, yes, sir.
Certified?
Yes.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 57, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 57, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Eric Anderson to position of part-time firefighter.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post ordinance number 57, 2015, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Moving on to, Tim, you wanna say something about their?
I can say something about all of them, they all passed their year probation. We put a lot of effort into, prior to hiring them, psychological testing, background, polygraph. We put a lot of effort into it, and these, these three gentlemen have done a very good job for us, so.
Yes, yeah. All right, moving on to yet another final appointment, ordinance number 58, 2015.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 58, 2015, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Paul J. Solinsky to the position of- An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Paul J. Solinsky to the position of part-time firefighter.
And that's junior, by the way.
And what's your pleasure?
I know who it is.
And what's your pleasure?
I'm honored to ask, Mayor, that we pass and post according to law ordinance number fifty-eight, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Vote, call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
And Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Another very fine man, ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
An ordinance confirming the final appointment of Jesse Johnson to the position of part-time firefighter.
And what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen, according to law.
Second.
Vote, call.
Uh, Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen passes, and those are three fine young men, along with a great dispatcher. So we've increased our staff to find people. Resolution number sixty, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution sixty, two thousand and fifteen, for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
A resolution appointing Kent Schelko to the position, to the Board of Zoning Code Appeals in order to fill a vacancy.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution sixty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Vote, call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
And Ms. Teller?
Yes.
Kent has outstanding credentials to go to the BCA, but the man that he's replacing, Greg Sop, has been on the BCA forever, and he will be moving downsizing, moving out of Macedonia, so this created the opening. And in interviewing Kent, I think there'll be a fine replacement. Because the Board of Zoning Appeals has tough decisions to make, you can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals when zoning says you cannot do something. And if you can prove a hardship and a reason why, then they will say, yes, we are going to allow you to do that. Now, you see how important that is for you can control how your city looks, how your city is, is spaced between homes? All of those things are very, very important, and this is an important job to do that. So thank you for appointing Kent. I think he's gonna do fine. Ordinance number sixty-one, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-one, two thousand fifteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to section three point zero one of the Charter, require a mayoral primary, primary for May of the election year in the event, and in the event there are more than, in the event there are more than two mayoral candidates. If that makes sense, I hope. If there's more than two candidates, there's a may bracket.
All right. Dave, could you please give us a little rundown on this next view that we're going over, including that one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this, as well as the next eight ordinances, are the result of the Charter Review Commission, which meets every four years. Ms. Hannigan and Mr. Leparo were present in the audience tonight, were part of that committee, and I want to thank them, as well as everybody else who worked hard, including Mr. Deemer, who prepared the legislation that we're gonna be talking about. This established, if the voters would approve this Charter Review, or this recommendation, there would be primary elections whenever three or more people declare a candidacy for mayor. The primary election would be held in May, and it does not change the election in the sense of, it's a non-party election. We all run as independents in Macedonia. We're not attempting to do that. It's just to establish a primary in the one, in the limited situation where three or more people declare their intent to run for mayor.
So then now we're on, the next one is ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-two, two thousand fifteen, for its first reading by title only, sir.
An ordinance providing for a submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to section three zero three of the Charter, changing the number of members of council needed to override a mayoral vote from a two-thirds to four-member vote. Two-thirds to four members.
All right. Now, these are all getting first reading, so you'll have time to study them. Ordinance number sixteen?
May I comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sure. I apologize. Whenever you hear changes, you think that there really is a change. This is what I would consider more a correction. Last, four years ago, there was a change in the number of members on council, decreased from six to five. Two-thirds vote of five is four. If you're good at math, you've already figured that out. But what we're trying to do is make this section of the Charter consistent with other sections of the Charter as amended four years ago, where they removed the fraction and placed in a whole number. So we're not asking that there be a change in the amount of council members necessary to override a veto. It is just changing it from two-thirds to four, which in reality is the same thing. We're just trying to clarify things.
Okay. Ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand and fifteen, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to sections three oh three and four oh three of the Charter, changing the presiding officer at the meetings of council from the mayor to the president of council.
If I may briefly again, it's very self-explanatory. It's not, it's been an issue that's been debated since I've been on council, and it's, it's my understanding it's been debated in Charter Review at least three other times, since, there has been three prior Charter Reviews since I've been on council. The mayor still has all the, would still have all the rights, duties, responsibilities as he, as he does now in the Charter, except if this was been approved by the citizens, there would then be the president of council for the year who would actually chair the meetings.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to section four thirteen of the Charter, changing the number of votes for removal of a member of council from four to three, excuse me.
Again, I, I think that this is a, is a housecleaning Charter Review request based upon the change that four years ago, and fortunately or unfortunately, a couple of things were missed. Prior to that, it took a majority of council to remove a council member, which I think makes logic. But now, because it wasn't corrected, it would take a super-majority, and so Charter Review is, thinks that it should be the majority as it was before, not a supermajority. So we would be decreasing that number down to, from four to three, which is a majority, and which I think places it in the same position it was before the amendment reducing council.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand fifteen.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance sixty-five, two thousand fifteen, for a first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to the, to Article nine of the Charter, by adding a separate sections for the appointment of the prosecutor within the Law Department with duties.
This, this is, does make a change currently, and I know Mr. Deemer will correct me if I'm wrong. The Law Department, the director, Law Director makes the appointment of prosecutor. I'm sure he consults with the mayor, but in this, if this change would be approved, the appointment would be that of the mayor, as is all other department heads. But it does not create a separate department head of prosecutor. The prosecutor is still part of the Law Department.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-six, two thousand fifteen.
I'll offer ordinance sixty-six, two thousand fifteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to section ten oh one of the Charter by changing the composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission by removing the mayor and the appointed member of council and replacing them with electors of the city.
Currently, there are five members on the Planning Commission, three which are appointed by the mayor. They are residents of the citizen, of the city, which are registered voters or referred to as electorates. This would remove both the mayor and the council representative to the Planning Commission, from the, from the Planning Commission. I am the, I am the council's representative this year. I have discussed this with the mayor, and the mayor does agree that both the mayor and the council representative should not serve on the Planning Commission. If the mayor wants to address it further, I'm sure he will, either tonight or some other time.
Well, the Planning Commission is to make decisions related to the rules and laws of the cities. And it should not be about politics. It should be about, is it right? Is it conforming, or is it not? There are a lot of issues that become political in the Planning Commission, and it shouldn't be that way. Rules are rules. And let those people who make that decision not have to worry about being re-elected, or are the voters gonna be mad about it? Simply, is it right, or is it wrong? So I agree with that one. Ordinance number sixty-eight, two thousand fifteen.
I believe it's sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to sections ten oh two and four oh nine of the Charter by removing the plating authority from the Planning Commission and making city council the plating authority and requiring that all recommendations of the Planning Commission be submitted to council for approval.
Moving on, ordinance number sixty-eight.
Do you want to talk on that one?
No.
Wait, I think you want to talk about all of them.
I was just going, going to say that, that this changes the current Planning Commission, who is the final plating authority to, to council for, for a final review. The thoughts were that, 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 this was pretty, that, from prior members on the Planning Commission, that this was a change that was necessary, and I know that this is gonna receive a lot of discussion, and we'll be talking about it in the next two council meetings.
Okay, thanks. Moving on, ordinance number sixty-eight, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-eight, two thousand and fifteen, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to sections ten oh one and eleven oh one of the Charter by requiring that one member of the Planning Commission serve as a non-voting member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
If I may, one of our members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Ms. Metzl, is here tonight. This is a recognition that the, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a very important and a very, should be a very independent board. I equate them to a court of law, that they should be, and I'm not suggesting they haven't been. I'm suggesting that you have, and your board has always acted well and maintained that, that independence. That they should continue to do that. But there is a, there is also a realization or a recognition that issues that have been addressed to, by, at the Planning Commission may need to be presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so they're asking that they're, that the, a member of the Planning Commission, again, electorate, not a political official, be appointed as a non-voting member to the Board of Zoning Appeals with the hopes that that person will, if they feel that it should be, present the, the thought process of what went on in Planning Commission. It's as if, similar as I talked to in the work session, it's like the Supreme Court we have of the United States. The solicitor general is allowed to present the position of the government, even though the government may not be a party to the action. And we're just, that's, that's the intent here, and it certainly is not to in any way reduce the independence of the Board of Zoning Appeals. It is to continue that independence, but it was felt that the Board of Zoning Appeals should also have the, the administration's Planning Commission, I should say, position when they meet.
Moving on, ordinance sixty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-nine, two thousand and fifteen, for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Macedonia a proposed amendment to section fourteen oh three A of the Charter, changing the number of votes for removal of the building commissioner from five, six of the numbers, members of council, excuse me, to four votes.
You've heard this song before. When we, the Charter changed four years ago, a couple of things got missed. This is one of those things that got missed. In all other situations, it went from five, six to four. This was overlooked, and we're trying to make it consistent with the rest of the Charter.
And that concludes the legislation for this evening. Are there any motions or other legislative actions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to explore the use of the ohiocheckbook.com software. There has been an offer provided by the Treasurer of Ohio to utilize the software so that we can communicate our expenditures to residents in a clearer, more concise way. And so I would like to see us pursue that. I, I am planning to research this and come back to council and make a recommendation. So I'd like to get a sense of council that we should proceed with that. So that's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence on the floor.
Mayor, I received an email today from resident Kevin Belkey. It is rather long. I did make copies for everyone, and I could make it part of the permanent record. It is a four-pager.
I think it's necessary to read that. I was asked to have that read.
Did you ask me to read it?
Yes.
Council Mayor, residents of Macedonia. My name is Kevin Belkey, and I would like to make a few observations from a special council meeting last night. I am very sorry that I cannot be there in person to read my statement. I am actually downstairs from you in a community meeting in the redevelopment and growth of Macedonia. I want to comment on Timothy, Timothy Dimoff professionalism, and thank him for going through his report last night. From past experience, it's never easy to stand up in front of people and deliver information, good or bad. Dimoff did it with ease and grace. Although I believe that he loves the sound of his own voice, and his analysis and answers were long and winded, he did his company, Saks Consulting, very proud. However, I did have some problems with the content of the report and how he reported them. I would like to share those with you tonight. Mr. Dimoff stated that he wanted to get the truth and was open to answering questions about his report. Although he, I'm sorry, although he would do it under oath during last night's meeting, he was not obligated to do so. I had some small issues with the presentation about Mr. Dimoff playing to the crowd, but the only big problem I had with Mr. Dimoff was him answering questions with questions. For me, nothing is more frustrating when someone says they are a champion of the truth and justice, and then turns around and dodges and evades answers to basic questions. Observation one, I am not sure exactly- Observation one, I am not sure exactly how many employees work inside the city building or the city as a whole, but I can tell you from, from personal experience that out of twenty-five people that I have spoken with, no less than seventeen would like Mr. Schwab to return to work to the city of Macedonia. Those seventeen are the ones who approached the subject with me unsolicited, and other eight did not bring up the subject, so I did not ask them how they felt. Excuse me. Unless there are secret departments that Mr. Dimoff spoke with, the overall tone of the city employees was unified against the idea of Mr. Schwab coming back, and I believe his termination was justified. I also want to comment on some of the statements that Mr. Dimoff made about employees being intimidated and bullied by the administration. He never actually called out the mayor or anyone for doing it, but he implied it was happening. The funny thing is that after my conversation with the employees, the overall tone was that there was indeed some bullying going on, but it was by the people sitting in the mayor's, to the mayor's right, and not the administration itself. Overall, I believe that Mr. Dimo, Dim, excuse me, Mr. Dimoff wants us to believe that employees of the city are not behind the mayor or any of the department heads. That is simply not true. Please do not take my word for it, but before you believe, but before you believe anything in any report about this matter, talk to who they are. They're, they are more willing to talk to me, and they would be happy to talk with any people about what is going on with council in the city. Observation two, I think Mr. Dimoff, who attended for the city of Macedonia, made the most revealing statement last night. After all of Mr. Dimoff's statements about red flags and warning signs, here is the biggest red flag of all. Scott, Scott Schwab, who personally, I do not know, has had personal conflicts with the service department, the law department, the building department, the engineering department, the mayor's office, and the people who worked for him in the finance department. This leads me to a statement made by Mr. Nick Molnar. Nick stated, even Mr. Schwab has had to note that his coming back to work at the city would be uncomfortable for all of us, for all, excuse me, to say the least. Why would he even want to come back? From my conversations with city employees, I am an outsider that people would have no reason to lie. Reason to lie to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Schwab was not well-liked, but more importantly, he was slowing down progress in the city and making it harder for other departments to accomplish their goals. That in itself not, may not be a reason for termination, but this has gone way past the point of him returning to an enjoyable work environment. Observation three, I don't think any one of us would deny that Ms. Hanekin is a strong, proud, and intelligent person. I am always very impressed by her knowledge of the city and her professionalism while conducting her duties as a councilperson, excuse me, as a city councilperson. After only a few conversations with her on varying subjects, I can easily see her having a sign that says, drew it right the first time, hanging in her office. With that said, I want to remind her that she will not, I would want to remind her, I am so sorry, with that said, I want to remind her that she will not vote to terminate a man who admittedly has done it wrong repeatedly the first time. Although Mr. Schwab offenses were glossed over by Mr. Dimoff, the facts remain this. Mr. Schwab told a city employee to falsify documents by backdating them. He used a city computer for personal work while being paid by the taxpayers of the city. He did not register contractors to work for the city, in or for the city. Even Ms. Hanekin would have to admit, this is not doing it right the first time. Observation four, the most observant offensive, offensive statement last night was made by Ms. Hanekin when she boasted that the city, Macedonia City Council has not spent any of the money on this issue. For me, everyone involved in this is to blame for this issue escalating to this level. The council and the mayor need to work as a team for the betterment of Macedonia. Wasting of a hundred thousand dollars is a reflection on everyone up to this, up on the dais right now. I personally would like to hear Ms. Darrow and Mr. Molnar, both candidates for reelection in fall, feelings on how they are going to resolve this problem, because paying, spending more money, and letting it linger is just ridiculous. This issue has become more about political agendas and less about what is in the best for the city as a whole. It does not matter who is right or wrong, what is fair or unfair. What matters is that this is an issue hurting the reputation of the city, and this needs to be resolved tonight, if not sooner. Unless, unless Scott Schwab is a financial wizard that the city cannot simply operate without, which I don't think anyone thinks he is, it is past time to cut ties and move forward. In conclusion, I am not anti-council or pro-mayor. I am a resident of Macedonia that would like to see and enter this issue. I read all the reports and sat through a few of the meetings. The one thing that I am certain of is that the people of Macedonia are the losers in all of this. It is time to move forward and to start many relationships, or it is time for new leadership. That is what is the best for the city of Macedonia. Thank you for your time, Kevin Belkey, candidate for council.
Is there any other correspondence?
No, sir, there is not.
Moving on to the mayor's report. Once again this week, I'm going to give you a combination mayor and service directors' report. So I'm going to start right off by telling you the last of the three mulch is out front. After that huge pile that's in front of city hall right now is gone, that's it. So make sure you keep this mulch for us, too. Remember, this is Macedonia residents mulch. If you see somebody there that you know is not from Macedonia, or is a business like a landscaper or something like that, please call the police non-emergency number, which is three three oh four six eight one two three four, and turn in their license number. I'd like to thank all those people who made the effort to put branches in their truck, to gather together as neighbors and make a big load of branches and bring them to the city, so that we can cut them up and make them into mulch. We do it with the big mulcher down at our service center. That's great, folks. I really appreciate you doing that, because you're getting rid of your branches, and yet you're making three mulch for the other residents to enjoy. We have to ask you, though, please, do not put anything in that pile where the branches are that would ruin the mulching machine. Over and over again, as we're mulching up the branches, bam, there goes all the teeth because something was in there that shouldn't have been in there, like a, a part of a bicycle or something like that. So please, try and just keep branches on that pile. The work is proceeding on Memorial Park, we talked about that. Soon it will be a gazebo that is white with cedar trees, and we will be planting replacement trees, but the trees will not come to last, remember, because we want to make sure they live. So the last thing we'll do will be to plant the new trees. Let me remind you, our festival's right around the corner in early June. We are all looking forward to it very much. Remember, it will be set up in the rec center parking lot, so if you work out, you might have to walk a little further because we're going to have rides where normally you park. So that should be happening the first part of June. I'd like to talk about the Future Growth Committee just a little bit. The Future Growth Committee is alive and well. However, they are no longer the Future Growth Committee. Since they have complete and control over their direction, their destination, and what they'd like to do, they changed their name. They're now going to be the Macedonia Redevelopment and Growth Committee. And I can tell you, they're doing this very, very professionally. In fact, they were going to have a plan ready to present to council about how long it will take them, what they're going to try and do, and they were going to do that on July ninth. Unfortunately, on July ninth, we're not going to have a council meeting. That'll be part of our hiatus, so it'll probably be the one after that. But they, they are keeping the same mission statement, which is good, but the scope was changed from twenty years to we should be doing this every five to ten years, and I agree with that, because this is now where we're going to be going through the very last phases. There's not a lot of land left in Macedonia. Whatever happens on that land has to be, have residents involved. What better way to have something that hopefully will please everyone is to have residents involved, and then bring that information forward to council so that council can pass it on, make it a law, and then it becomes our comprehensive land use plan. So they are alive and well. In fact, tonight, they're meeting downstairs, and I'd like to thank them for the dedication that they have and the time they've spent up to this point. Last night, the special council meeting was recorded. It was three and a half hours long, and our discs are only for about two and a half hours. So luckily, we had our technician here that has experience enabling us to compress the meeting and get it on the disc, but it's going to take a little bit of time, so it probably won't be on the air until Friday. When you watch it, it's three and a half hours long, but I feel you should watch it all the way through so you get both sides of the story. And that concludes my report for this. Moving on to department reports, and let me tell you that Mike, Mike Dunn is going to be graduating, so he's not here, so we'll start with Angela this week.
Mr. Mayor, committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, committee reports.
The safety committee had met. We were discussing some of the needs in fire and police. One of the things that have come up, and I know I've alluded to this in the past, is a ladder truck. We're looking at about a million dollars for our ladder truck, which we definitely need to have. I'm sure the chief could speak more to the necessity of that vehicle, but we were discussing different options for paying for that truck. I know those other options have been explored. I still believe that we're looking into other options, but at this point, I don't know that we have any. Chief, did you want to touch on that?
Well, we're looking at contacting our other communities that share the use of the tower and have for the past twenty-five years, so we're hoping that we might be able to do some cooperative purchasing for some large items and share those costs with the other communities.
And one of the things that I'm going to do is try and get a meeting together with those other communities to sit down and at least talk about, you know, sharing in the cost of that, because that's obviously a, a big expense that we're going to have coming up. Another need is an ambulance. I know this council has discussed ways we could pay for that, we may be, may be able to absorb that this year within our budget. I believe in the June eleventh meeting, we'll have legislation for that. We have a need for part-time dispatchers. We're having trouble keeping the dispatchers due to, part of the reasons, the rate of pay. We looked at other communities and what they pay a dispatcher, and I think it shied people away from applying due to the fact that I think it was ten dollars an hour. Chief?
Yeah, it's lower pay, the hours, weekends, holidays, that, that's an issue, always has been.
So we're looking to adjust that to an appropriate level where we can get some quality employees in here, and actually some people that want to stay. I know the turnover is high, and I think a big piece of that is the low rate of pay. We're also considering full-time and feasible. Another piece coming up is repairs for some vehicles in the fire department. We're going to need to appropriate some money to keep our equipment up and running, so that'll be forthcoming.
And that was good, all good stuff, but we got to keep this in mind, we're talking about spending more money on fire equipment. We have an ISO rating of two. Our fire department is rated in the top one percent of the country. And to do that, they have to have the proper equipment, so you get what you pay for. If you paid for this equipment, you'll be able to keep that rating of ISO two, and your fire insurance for your home or your business is cheaper. And if you don't know about that, you should talk to your insurance agent and tell them, I should have, not have to pay as much as other communities around us for my fire insurance. Any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, this is a, maybe not a committee report, but it's, I'd like to just say something about the Longwood Manor Historical Society. This past week, the news leader supplement explored Nordonia Hills featured the manor house on the cover. I want to thank John and Dan and everybody else who worked so hard on this. I want to encourage you all to read it, it's a really nice piece, and a lot has been accomplished, and I just want to recognize that and thank them for their effort.
Thanks, Ms. Grant.
My pleasure.
Double extra large, and right? I want a teacher. They'll be at our, our festival selling, well, no, not selling teachers, but you get one with the donation, right? Right, we got to say it right.
Well, I'd make them donate, then. Oh, Mr. Mayor, they don't, may not have your size, I think you just got insulted.
Can I say something?
Sure you can, John.
I couldn't talk in public session, I was downstairs.
Sure you were.
I just had a couple comments that we've, we have made, we've accomplished what we've accomplished. When you read that article, we've accomplished a lot, we have had some huge donations, huge contributions from people. We had a roofer who spent a year and a half, in his own time, never charged us re-roofing that roof. He'd go there after work, he had a roofer job. We had all these slate, or most of it donated to us for that roof. That would have been a forty thousand dollar roof job if we had to pay it. And I just want to mention, we recently, we're working with the Pike builders, they're our contractors. There's a lady that Mr. Pike talked to that's going to donate a new, another furnace to the manor. It's, it's a newer furnace than the one that's in there right now. We got that running this last winter. Jackson Heating got it started for free for us, but now we're going to be getting a newer furnace put in, as a donor, she donated it. So that's, that's how we're succeeding here. People are, are recognizing, I've got something important there in the park.
Good, good job. Any other committee report?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that the charter review had wrapped up, and I want to thank the residents and Mr. Engel. I know that that's an extraordinary amount of time that you've spent doing that, that I know a lot of us really didn't have the ability to commit to, so thank you for your, your time, Mr. Engel, and the people that volunteer their time to be on that committee. It is appreciated.
All right, no more committee reports now. We're going to move on to Mrs. Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, the festival is coming up, June fourth through the seventh. There will be food concessions, games, amusement rides, live entertainment, we'll have a beer garden again, we'll have Disney characters on Saturday and Sunday, and biggest of all, we'll have our city fireworks display, that's Saturday night at ten PM. So that is Saturday, June sixth, at ten PM. So if you want to come out to view the free fireworks display, admission's free, parking's free, the entertainment's free. We do have pre-sale wristband sales going on at the rec center for daily unlimited ride passes for the children, so you can save some money if you buy those in advance. And again, those are at the front desk at the rec center during our business hours. The mayor did mention parking, which is something I was going to touch on as well. Beginning, the ride company does come in to set up beginning this Sunday night, so portions of the parking lot will be unavailable, we'll be marking those off Sunday night, and overflow parking for patrons, and a little, throughout the week, progressively more parking will be directed to the gravel lot behind the main rec center lot as last year. We do provide shuttle cart service for those who don't want to make the walk, or don't want to walk in the rain, or are unable to walk. We have additional handicap parking spaces designated over there, so we will have shuttle carts running people back and forth, which seemed to work very well last year, so we're hoping that that works just as well this year. And depending on the weather and how long it takes for the ride company to tear down at the conclusion of at the conclusion of the event, we are bringing a sweep, a sweet street sweeper in to go through the lot before we allow patrons to start parking there again. So we've coordinated that with the service department, and it may, depending when they completely tear down, the lot may remain closed that following Monday morning or so, and people may question why it's still not reopened if the rides are all gone. But it is so that we can get a street sweeper through there to pick up any left behind debris from the, the rides, you know, being put together and torn down, litter, cigarette butts, those types of things. So we ask for everybody's cooperation and understanding with that, and everyone seems to be very excited about that. We, we didn't run into any problems last year trying to coordinate the rec center parking with that going on, so we hope for the, for the same this year. And that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Welcome back, Angela, and I congratulate you on your merry name, much easier to pronounce.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Very good, thank you. Nick?
Thanks, Mayor. Two projects worthy of reporting on, the road program, weather permitting, should be completed within the next two-week period. The ODOT 271 project, currently there's closures at ledge of North and South Freeway. Been notified by ODOT that they're having an extremely difficult time setting the beams for the new structures. If you drive through the corridor, you can see the steel beams sitting inside the highway. They're having a hard time with track time. With that said, the closure of North and South Freeway at ledge is going to be extended. We should have an update from ODOT. After this weekend, they will be setting beams on Saturday, so we'll report back and let you know how long that closure's going to continue. And that's all I have.
I have a question for you. We're talking about stormwater, and we're talking about 271. And I just have, over the years, always noticed what looks like storm breaks in the medians. You know anything about those? Are those like catch basins?
Yeah, they, there is a storm sewer system in the highway network.
So in other words, they're collecting water off the roadway?
Yes.
So we got a chance or may not be an increase in water because they are redoing all of that. I see they'll all be new.
Yeah, they will, they will be expanding on the storm sewer system, tying into the existing culverts. They do have, they do have stormwater requirements, they do have to address for this type of project. They've got a pretty lengthy drainage, drainage design policy that, that specifies what needs to be done based on the type of project, the characteristics of the project. They do have to address stormwater for this type of project. They don't address stormwater volume, they do address stormwater quality. They do have to address EPA Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan requirements, so to say there's, there's no stormwater issues addressed in the project is not correct. They do address water quality, and erosion and sediment control. They just, you won't see detention type of project because this project doesn't warrant volume.
So more or less, bad water flowing in there is kept there?
Correct.
All right, well, that helps a little bit, really. I don't know if it gives you any better rest, but it's something. All right, Tim, what you got for us?
Just very busy, Mayor. We are actually a hundred and fifteen calls above last year to this date. So I don't know what the increase is, I can't pinpoint it, but we're a hundred and fifteen calls above last year to this date, so very busy.
Wow, awesome. Thank you. John?
For those who haven't followed on Facebook, I believe we have the white strobe lights from Ledge Road resolved. Reading the emails, it seems like it's resolved. I was going to run up there after the meeting, so I think they're flashing red again. Thanks to Nick Feeney. I finally got ahold of somebody after weeks of trying to deal with Ohio Edison and First Energy. It is a mountain of a hill to climb to get ahold of somebody, but Nick got me ahold of somebody who, I talked to somebody who passed me to somebody, and I actually got ahold of the guy who erected the towers. And he went back and I think got ahold of somebody at Ohio Edison who changed a relay or fixed the gizmo, or, I don't know. But supposedly, it's fixed.
Good.
So I was going to run up there and hopefully verify that it was fixed. I know we got a lot of calls from the residents about how bright they were. We got some from the folks in Northfield, some from folks in our town, some from people driving down the interstate, so hopefully that's resolved, and we'll move on to the next thing that's not police-related.
It was amazing that they were white, because usually they're red.
Well, they're white during the daytime, and they go to, at dusk, they're supposedly supposed to change to red.
Gotcha.
Now, they initially, what I learned was they initially, they initially did work properly, and then they had to take the system off standard power and put it on a generated power for some reason, and that's when they reverted back to white all the time.
Okay.
So I don't know where the relay comes in, I don't know where the, supposedly, they're fixed.
I want to say thank you for doing that, though.
They were not on at all?
They did not, they didn't flash any color at all, there was no.
Okay, I was, I was told, I was told that they're, they'll be fixed by Friday. Some of the folks on Facebook had said they weren't flashing white at night, so I'm going to run up there today and then take.
I'd like to say thank you for personally taking that on, because when you ride the freeway, you see them, and then you think about the people on ledge and go, oh my, and the people in Northfield. And I understand the purpose of them, and we understand why you have to have them, that you don't want them in your backyard, and these people who live right around them, that's like shining, you know, those halogen lights that sit and just beam all night.
Those that light these storms.
That they're just, and people driving on the freeway, they're right in your eyes. So you're thinking about the fact that they've got to live with the twenty-four seven because we're sitting on white. I really want to thank you for taking the bull by the horns. Unfortunately, we'd love to see no lights, but we understand why there are lights.
Yeah, I don't know that the red are an issue, because I haven't heard, I mean...
It doesn't light up as much at nighttime as the light ones. Other lights just...
Yeah, the, the white ones are meant for daytime for the helicopters. It's an FAA regulation that when a tower's certain height, those are two hundred feet, and they require a certain lighting. I know there's a tower that they erected south of Highland that has no lights, and I asked the gentleman, I said, why do we have? He said, that one's a hundred and ninety feet and doesn't need any. Okay.
But that's why you see the microwave towers. Depending on the height, they're either all lit up or there's nothing, but it depends on the height. But I really do thank you.
Well, yeah, some of the research I did to try to find a solution for folks was, in 2012, they changed some of the lighting requirements again, based on some of the things that they learned, that birds were being attracted to them and killed because of, I don't know if it was the intensity, how they flashed, or whatever, but they had to change some of the regulations based on the birds being killed. So I guess these things evolved periodically through the FAA, and regardless of the fact, hopefully Friday, it's going to be done, and we'll move on to something else.
Doesn't have a lot to do with, and Nick can appreciate this, but the manual of uniform traffic control devices. I got that out. That, to understand that, you almost need to be an engineer, because it is that complicated.
That's why we call Mr. Hobbs at GPD.
Well, that was going out of your way, because if a resident were to try and deal with the bureaucracy that we have through utility companies, they probably never would have got it resolved, but you taking the bull by the horns.
Well, you know, the police department has some numbers to deal with those folks, and I wasn't getting anywhere. I finally, Nick sent me a number that got me eventually to the right person, so Nick kind of saved the day here.
All right, thank you. All right, Joe, anything?
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm concerned about the emotions that were expressed by the majority of council who refused to support the administration, specifically the mayor's decision to terminate an employee. The mayor has given the authority under the charter to appoint, control all employees, and supervise all departments, and unfortunately, the majority of council either didn't understand or didn't listen to the facts and the evidence that's been presented over the past nine months. I'm concerned about the emotion, because they showed emotion in making a decision to bring a person back who expressly diverted all the attention to you, the mayor, which I understand you're the elected official, but for the investigator that they privately hired to attack members of the administration, who are career public officials, who have not been tainted in any way at all, and to allow their names to be dragged through the mud as criminally culpable, or having conflicts of interest, or having improper behavior going on, is, is really an emotional item that the administration should feel and have a right to feel. Now, I'm not going to sniffle about it, but I think my twenty-five years in this city has been remarkable for everyone. I've worked hard, I've gone through tough times, we've gone through financial dilemmas, and always come out on top, and this city has been better for it. I've served under three mayors, and no matter how many opposing councilmen there have ever been, there's never gone to the level of people attacking personally other individuals in this administration. Retired Service Director Jim Diggatano's got decades in this city, and for the majority of council to allow this investigator, so-called, to dump on that man and to accuse him of the vile things that were in his report is abominable to me, and I speak for him as well. He's not here because he's, he retired. Mike Ladd, also not here tonight, had no supporting evidence or facts that this man could back up last night, and yet the majority of council let him do this publicly and in writing, and did nothing to stop or edit or take out his report when they saw it before he made it public. Those were things that were just wrong, and they should not have happened, and people with good conscience and reasonable behavior, and, and who have the good interests of this community in mind, in, in heart and in mind, would not have allowed that to happen when there was no supporting facts or evidence. When I cross-examined him last night, he was admitting to total ignorance of the building commissioner's duties. He admitted to being wrong, he admitted that he didn't talk to certain people, he admitted that the engineer was not accurately portrayed. He made a lot of mistakes, and he said, I just didn't have the money, or the support, or the time to go into all of those things and try and find those true facts. Those were the things that he admitted. And for the majority of council, to allow your people that work for you, that have done everything over twenty-five years to help you and your predecessors do what's right for this community, to allow someone to do that, and especially someone who values their reputation more, if not more, is equally as much as any one of you. I've been a lawyer since seventy-two, forty-three years, Notre Dame, Georgetown, Justice Department. I have served for many mayors in many cities, and many councilmen in many cities, and for a few people to condone or hire someone to attack my integrity is abominable, and it won't be treated lightly, and it will not be dropped. I do not understand how the majority of council could not read and understand the things that were portrayed, and no defense was presented, and not one of the three councilmen, despite all the emotion, gave any justification for their final opinion as a juror. As the trial was held, they didn't give any explanation or justification for Scott illegally using his computer over the course of two years, with his time clock record showing he was on duty, being paid by the taxpayers of the city of Macedonia, and illegally using his computer for another city's business and for his B's business. No one's justifying that, and yet they do not uphold your decision. No one justified his instructing an employee to backdate an invoice in order to keep Department of Natural Resource monies for the fishing program. Nobody's justifying that. They're admitting it and just saying, it's okay. There's no one justifying or denying that he lied to council and to the administration about things that were told to him by the state. That's things that nobody has tried to justify. There, nobody's justifying that he, it was proven that he didn't follow ordinances that were adopted by council that resulted in financial loss to this city. He lost insurance premiums that were paid for thirty vehicles that we didn't own, and we paid premiums on them for several years. And no one's justifying in law or fact that the code required him to be responsible for that. No one is explaining it. Their investigator couldn't, couldn't defend it. He was given the laws, he was given the information, he was given the Medina example and the court cases that upheld the man being found guilty of a crime, this auditor for this county of Medina for using the computer while on duty. I mean, if you're going to give an opinion, make some justification for it. Not keeping an inventory of vehicles was a requirement. Disclosing, their, their own investigator said, people should disclose their relationships. He didn't disclose that the city's insurance company that he hired also was his insurance company. The painter he had at his house also became the painter here that he hired. Those things were not justified. And so I'm a little emotional about it as well, because it's unfair that the administration gets constantly attacked by a few, and it's time that the citizens of this community saw the evidence, look at the evidence, and they should weigh the evidence, too. They don't need to see all three and a half hours, all they need to see is the last hour and a half, maybe.
Yes, Mr. Cunn.
And that'll be what they'll see. And the behavior of some of the councilmen during that time period when their investigator was being deflated. Nothing further, Mayor.
Is there any unfinished business for us tonight? Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to congratulate the Nordenia Hills Community Chorus and the Nordenia Hills Community Band for an outstanding concert on Saturday night. It was a Memorial Weekend Council held at the Macedonia Methodist Church. It was, it was very heavily attended, and a couple of things happened. We raised over quite a bit of money for the Baskets of Hope charity, and we had a very, very good audience, so I want to congratulate everybody involved.
And in the spirit of disclosure, you're going to tell us you were a member, right?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to a chairman.
I do, second.
Mr. Earl?
Yes?
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Thank you for calling. Have a nice evening.
It's all right. You can get me. I'm prepared. I'm prepared. Hi, Missy, you. No, you know, it's, today, I was in my office, I was on the phone, and I, and I got off.